Okay, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, October 3, 2023. And I would like to ask that you all prioritize for brief invocation and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are ever thankful in Batavia for the many blessings that have been showered upon us, both as a community and as individuals. And we want to seriously remember the situation that occurred in Florida with the hurricane over the past few days. We've heard all kinds of stories, reports, rumors, but at this moment, I have not heard of anybody from Batavia who was lost in that hurricane. And I get my fingers crossed that hopefully that will be the case. We certainly had some that lost property and had damage and really kind of, I think, escaped on a very narrow measure, but we are very thankful that all the reports that have reached us so far have been positive as far as nobody being seriously injured or killed. So we thank everybody for the blessing of that. And tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the United States of America. And we just ask that each one of these men and women, and along with all those serving with them, are also remembered in our thoughts and our prayers. Tonight, we ask for understanding and vision and guidance on the part of the City Council as we handle the items of business before us, knowing that each member of the Council is here tonight to do what in their best hearts and minds is in the best interest of Batavia in the future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Beck, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is sin's foundation, under our oath, and with this love, with the routine and justice
A reminder to everyone, if you're going to address us tonight, please come forward and use the podium with the microphone, because this is being broadcast on BATV. And if you don't use the microphone, people can't hear what you're saying. So it's that simple and that understanding. Okay, then, let's move to item number five, which are items to be... Oh, I'm sorry. Let's do the roll call.
Miller.
Here.
Rizzato.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Connolly.
Here.
Janzett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Fourteen of fourteen, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank everyone for coming in whatever fashion and method you came. When I first walked in here about three or four minutes ago, we were pretty sparse on the council, and that, I think, was one of the reasons I was hesitant to call for the roll call for a minute to see if we'd have any show up, but we do have everybody in attendance, so I appreciate that. All right, then, let's move to item five, which are items to be removed, edited, or changed on the agenda. Do we have anything, Alderman Janzett?
That's what I'm aware of, Your Honor.
Anybody else? All right, then, let's move to item six, which is a presentation and action on tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Janzett, Governmental Services Chairman, would you present this, please?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place and file the August 2022 monthly financial report. The committee give the whole minutes for July 12, 2022, and commission minutes for August 17, 2022, and short preservation commission, August 22, 22, and September 12, 2022. Approvals: The October 3, 2022 payroll in amount of $1,050,824.68. The accounts payable check register in amount of $1,373,854.46. City council minutes for September 19, 2022. Ordinance 22-43, an ordinance amending ordinances adopted by the City Council, City of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage Counties, Illinois, authorizing and providing for the issue of waterworks revenue bonds from IEPA of said city. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Janzett, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the consent agendas presented. Any further comments or questions? Kirk, call the roll.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Fourteen of fourteen, Your Honor.
Consent agenda is approved. Fourteen yes, no no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number seven, which are matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening that wishes to address the City Council? If you do so, I'd ask that you come up and use the microphone and the podium. Yes, we don't. Okay. Moving then to, we have a couple of very nice proclamations, and the first one is World Polio Day, October 24, 2022. And Alderman Janzett, do you have that?
I do, Your Honor. Our proclamation, World Polio Day, and polio now. Whereas Rotary International, founded in 1905 in Chicago, Illinois, is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary launched Polio Plus in 1985, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today is composed of Rotary International, the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, the Global Alliance for Vaccines and Immunization, to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas the number of polio cases has dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating this dreaded disease. And whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than $2.4 billion and countless volunteer hours to protect nearly 3 billion children in 122 countries and geographic areas. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $15 million per year, which the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation will match with an additional $100 million for maximum impact. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $10 billion to the effort. And whereas there are over 1.4 million Rotary members in 146 clubs throughout the world that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, the environment in their local communities, and abroad. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Monday, October 24, 2022 as World Polio Day in Batavia. Encourage all residents to join me and Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Janzett, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the Polio Day proclamation. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no no, none absent.
Motion's approved. It's a little bit unclear to me, do we have somebody in the audience here to accept this proclamation?
Yes, Your Honor.
You're going to do it, Chief?
Sure.
Got a few over.
And we actually have two proclamations. The other young... Yeah. George Sheets, Library Director, and Rotarian since 1985. The year that the polio initiative began was the year I first became a Rotarian. And through three communities in which I've participated in Rotary, and of course, now here in Batavia, it's been a remarkable project, a world-changing project. And it shows the power of friends and neighbors to make a difference in the world when they work together for a great cause, such as the eradication of polio. And many of us in the room, and many listeners, may not remember how devastating a disease this is, and the terrible impact it had on families. I'm old enough to remember iron lungs and neighbors that were afflicted with polio, and it's something that we're so close to, as Rotary likes to say, we're this close to eliminating polio in the world. And I just want to thank you for the great support from the city and the mayor for this proclamation. And your Rotary Club of Batavia is here not only for this initiative, but to help make Batavia an even better place to live. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank the members of Rotary for coming down. Rotary has always been one of the starships of support in Batavia, and certainly the membership that serves now is perhaps setting a new record for the amount of faces on the Rotary and the number of good deeds and actions that they've been taking. So I'm very pleased that the Rotary is such a viable organization in Batavia, and your organization's been around a long time. I know it's at least the 1940s. George, when did the Rotary start? I know you probably had that in the top of your head.
March 1948.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay, then, we have a couple of proclamations, and we want to do these together? Is that what we're...
Yeah.
So the Chief's going to join with me up at the podium.
Chief, if you want to explain what kind of happen...
Yes. For the council's information, on Sunday, September 4, Nicholas Frank, Nick, who lives on South Batavia Avenue, was stung by multiple bees while he was working in the yard. Nick happens to be allergic to them. He called 911, which I've listened to the tape, but while on the phone, had started having trouble breathing and was unable to continue talking, and passed out because he went into anaphylactic shock. His five-year-old son, Nico, was able to get on the 911 call, continued to assist the dispatchers in seeking help for his father, and ran next door to his neighbor's house. And while his neighbor's parents only spoke Spanish, her teenage daughter happened to be at home. Nico had learned enough, or knew enough Spanish, to alert them on what was going on in the emergency. Their teenage daughter, I guess I say it right, Yari? Yadi? Cordova, I'm sorry, went over, found Mr. Frank's epi pen, and administered it before our ambulance arrived. These quick actions by Nico, five-year-old Nico, and, I'm going to do it, Yadi?
Yadi.
Okay. Ensured this positive outcome for Nick, which we're really glad to see, and helped save him from a life-threatening situation. So we had requested that the mayor do a couple of proclamations for both of these young people.
If it's okay with the council, I'm just going to read one of them, and that way we can honor them both, because they both say the same thing with their names. Proclamation, City of Batavia, whereas about 2 million people in the United States are allergic to bee stings, and in most severe cases, an allergic reaction to a bee sting can cause anaphylactic shock, requiring treatment with a shot of Euphrine...
Euphrine.
Euphrine. And whereas on Sunday, September 4, 2022, Nicholas Frank was stung by multiple bees and suffered a reaction that caused him to go into shock and passed out while he was on the phone with 911. And whereas his five-year-old son, Nico, witnessed and happened to run to the neighbor's house for help. His neighbor only spoke Spanish, but Nico was able to learn some Spanish in school and was able to alert him to his dad's condition. Whereas a neighbor went over and found Mr. Frank's epi pen and administered the shot before the paramedics arrived. And whereas the quick action by Nico ensured a positive outcome to the life-threatening situation. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby commend and immediately take action, commend the immediate action taken by Nico Frank, which directly resulted in saving Nicholas Frank from a life-threatening situation. And we have a second one of these, but this one is made out to...
Yari.
Sorry, Cordova. So maybe if I could get the two of you here.
And we do have the two paramedics also responding on the phone. They want to come up and take pictures. And...
We want to take a nice picture here, so why don't you, the medics, get here beside me. Come on up here. There's kind of some of the arrows in this moment. And we have the two proclamations. For Nico, where is Nico? On the right here. On behalf of the good people of Batavia, we present that to... And then also, we have one for Yari. Same for you. So I really think it's very commendable that we have a nice setting for something like this to talk about. This could have been a real sad moment, and by the actions of the two of you, you were going to turn this thing around and perform the life-threatening situation, which all of Batavia should be extremely, extremely proud of. So I'd ask the audience to be joined with me and giving them around.
I just want to say thank you. I'm glad I'm there, trying my best to help you out. And I'm glad to be here.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I'm glad I'm there, trying my best to help you out. And I'm glad to be here.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I'm glad I'm there, trying my best to help you out. And I'm glad to be here.
Are you the last name?
I was sad. They went down, got stung. I could play the game, and he got sick. I was about to play, and I gave it to him.
Two is supposed to be... Thank you. Thank you, Father. Thank you.
Well, the trends and all the things we have to do at the City Council, some of them are rough, and some of them are happy, and some of them are very proud moments. And I think we've just experienced a very proud moment regarding some young folks of our community who really stepped forward and did the right thing at the right time. So Batavia should be very proud of what we've just illustrated. Okay, moving to item 10 on the agenda, which is approval of the appointment of Alderman Tom Connolly to replace Alderman Mike Rizzato on the TRICOM Central Dispatch Board. Have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Wolf.
Second.
Second by Alderman Sulfah. Let me just say that I appreciate Alderman Connolly's willingness to step forward. This is quite a vital position, and this is, you know, you talk about something that's life and death. This, many times, can be this. So we're very proud of what we've been able to build in TRICOM in the last 40-plus years that it's been there. And I also want to publicly thank Alderman Rizzato for, you had, what, how many years service?
I want to say three.
Okay, well, appreciate you going. That's every month, that's a call to action, and there's a lot of interesting and necessary things talked about. So appreciate very much your efforts to do that. So I guess I'd ask for a vote on the appointment then of Tom Connolly as the new Batavia City Council Representative on the TRICOM Central Dispatch Board.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no no, none absent.
Motion's approved. All right, item number 11 is the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, and do we have somebody here tonight to speak on behalf of the chamber?
No. Margaret was unable to attend tonight, but the chamber has many upcoming events for businesses in our community, and all of those can be found on the event calendar on the Chamber of Commerce website.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then, moving to item number 18 is waiver of formal bidding for services to install HDPE conduit on the area of Pine Street and Woodland Hills Drive. Who's got it? Alderman Wolf?
Real quick, we have to go back to 12.
Well...
Is that the bottom of the last page for the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Resolution 12 is Resolution 22-100-R, facade improvement grant for 106 West Wilson Street for Batavia Enterprises. Who's got this?
This one I have, Your Honor. Thank you. This is a downtown improvement grant for work to be done on the 106 West Wilson Street building that BEI owns. This one is a grant in the amount of $5,000. This is glass repairs to windows, replacement of windows, quite a bit of work that's being done. It's almost $100,000 for the work that BEI is doing to this building. Again, this is one of those things that the Tiff District Downtown has supported over the time that it's been there, and I think this is really a good thing, because these are some of the most looked-at buildings up and down Wilson Street that do need maintenance, that do need help, that do need repairs. And anytime we can help those companies, businesses, owners of those buildings improve them, I think it only benefits the downtown. So this is what that's for. If anybody has any questions, Wendy is here. We've talked about this before, and when they're changing the color of the windows, correct?
Yes, we did. Good evening, City Council. We changed the, they were white, and you can still see some of the white, but we're changing them over to more of a bronze color. And the ash, the original ash wood, still on the window, some of it was needing replacement, so we did that, and we scraped away all of the old paint. So you can still see some remnants right now of the white, which will become, it's actually called pella brown, because they are pella windows that are going into the building.
Very good. So I think a very, very good thing to be, you know, occurring downtown. And again, what the grant program is set up to do is to try to incentivize that and help people do that. So really glad to see that. Any questions? I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 22-100-R, facade improvement grant for 106 West Wilson Street.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malley for the approval of Resolution 22-100-R, facade grant improvement for 106 West Wilson Street. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
I just want to say thank you. And a special thank you to Anthony Isom, who makes, who could make a, you know, kind of, it could be an overwhelming process applying for a grant, but he makes a seemingly complicated thing to do very uncomplicated. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you for that comment. I'm sure Anthony's phone's going to ring a lot more now.
Sorry.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing. I'm not, we not know, who's the go-to man in Batavia? Kirk, call the roll on the vote.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no no, none absent.
Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing the improvement.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, moving to 13 then, approval of waiver of formal bidding for services to install HDPE conduit in the area of Pine Street and Woodland Hills Drive. Who's got this one?
I can take it.
That's right. Ian presented.
Alderman Miller?
So if I remember correctly here, several weeks ago, we ended up having several power outages within like a two-hour span. What happened was, we had some faulty wires that shorted out. Those wires are at the end of their life cycle, so it's time to replace them. But City Electric was able to get in and temporarily fix those, but now we're going to need to pour some new conduits in. The old ones were put in, they have some, they have a moisture problem, but now we do pipes so that we can pull cables in and replace them as need be after, in their life cycle. So this is to replace those so that we do not have any more outages on that east side.
Thank you for that. Somebody care to make the motion?
Oh, I guess I make a motion to...
Wave formal bidding?
Yeah, wave formal bidding. Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Alderman Miller, second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of wave formal bidding for services to install HDPE conduit in the area of Pine Street and Woodland Hills Road. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no no, none absent.
Motion's approved. All right, then, moving to 14, which is Resolution 22-102-R, approving an emergency contract with Ray's Electrical and Boring Services to install the HDPE conduit in the area of Pine Street and Woodland Hills Road for an amount not to exceed $129,984, which includes a 10% contingency. Who's got the most, who wants to make that motion?
Ian.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm going to make the motion on that.
To put the conduit in.
The conduit.
That what I just did? Oh, this is for the resolution. My bad.
And we just waived the bidding, now we have to do it.
Yes, I make a motion to approve emergency conduit with Ray's Electric and Boring Services to install HDPE conduit in the area of Pine Street and Woodland Hills Drive for the amount not to exceed $129,984, which includes a 10% contingency.
Second. Moved by Alderman Miller, second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of Resolution 22-102-R, approving the emergency contract with Ray's Electrical and Boring Services to install the HDP conduit in the area of Pine Street and Woodland Hills Road for an amount not
Yes, I make a motion to approve emergency conduit Ray's Electric and Boring Services to install HDP E conduit in the area of Pine Street and Woodland Hills Road for an amount not to exceed $129,984, which includes a 10% contingency.
Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, no, none absent.
All right, motion's approved. Moving to item fifteen, which is the Administrator's Report. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I'd like to do is a better job with your chamber upcoming events update. I didn't have the list in front of me before when I came up. But Mayor and I had the opportunity to meet with an incoming business, Everdeen's Grilled Cheese, who are really excited are going to be opening up their second location here. Their first location is in Naperville, and it was with pride that we told them about our Chamber of Commerce organization, how many members they have, what a strong organization it is, and what worthwhile programming that they have for businesses of all types in our community. So the chamber's upcoming events are on Wednesday, October 5th at 8:00 a.m., the Not-for-Profit Forum. And that is in-person at Little Brothers Friends of the Elderly Audrey's House in Batavia. And Monday, October 10th at 11:15 a.m., Chamber Connectors Business Mastermind at Limestone Coffee. Tuesday, October 11th at 11:30 a.m. is the Batavia Women in Business Women and Leadership Luncheon at Orchard Valley Golf Course. Wednesday, October 12th at 8:00 a.m. is Coffee and Commerce at Douglas Carpet One, 490 North Randall Road, Batavia. Open Morning Networking. Wednesday, October 12th at 5:00 p.m. is a ribbon-cutting ceremony at Start Something Studio, 12 North Van Buren Street, Batavia. Thursday, October 13th at 4:00 p.m. is a ribbon-cutting ceremony at Ketalpa Manor, 10 East Wilson Street, Suite 2. Monday, October 17th at 3:00 p.m. is a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Edward Jones Financial Advisors at 2631 Williamsburg Avenue, Suite 302 in Geneva. Wednesday, October 26th at 11:30 a.m., Fall Into Business Multi-Chamber Progressive Luncheon at Villa Olivia Bartlett. Wednesday, October 19th, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m., meet the new Chamber Board and Board reunion networking at Rookie's Pub and Grill, sponsored by Metronet, spotlighting Tri-City Health Partnership. And Thursday, October 27th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., is a volunteer opportunity at Northern Illinois Food Bank. It's the Chamber Service Night. Please email margaret@bataviacamber.org to sign up. And last, but certainly not least, November 3rd at 7:30 a.m. is the annual Mayor's Breakfast. Different venue for this event this year. It will be at the Homestead. See bataviachamber.org, I'm sorry, bataviachamber.org for more details. So I hope that some of those events, you'll be able to participate in. Also, now is the time of year when we start talking about the brush and leaf collection. All those leaves are turning beautiful colors out there, but it won't be very long before they're all falling on our lawns. And so we do have four leaf collections this year, beginning October 17th on the east side, switching over to the west side on October 24th, coming back to the east side on October 31st, and then over back to the west side on November 7th. And then on November 28th, we have our final citywide brush collection. With regard to the leaves, it's important that you don't rake your leaves into the street because they can clog the storm sewers. And anyway, with all of the leaves blowing around, it would be really important for everyone, locate the storm sewer that's nearest to your driveway, and just make sure that it isn't clogged with leaves because that can really help to prevent unnecessary flooding. I wanted to let City Council know that the interview process for the Deputy Chief of the Fire Department has been concluded, and that the two top candidates we will be making offers to. So we hope to be able to announce the acceptance of those offers soon, and introduce you to the two new deputy chiefs at an upcoming meeting. And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions to Laura? Before you come down, I was contacted by Kane County Board Chairman Pierog on Friday, and she has asked that Laura and myself and the Police Chief and the Fire Chief come to the next Kane County Board meeting because they're going to pass something or some proclamation or something in which they want to publicly express their thanks to the City of Batavia for our support in allowing for the SAMs Club to be opened up as the shot, COVID shot location, and all the support which the Police and Fire Department gave to that movement to get people in and out. And we had a few people get painted out there, and we had to call for ambulances. So there was quite a bit of connection to us all. And then they just want to officially thank us because, as you may know, the city volunteered through myself to provide the electricity to run that facility while it was being used for the shots. And I think we're going to be able to recapture all that through a federal, I kind of said that knowing that that would be the case because I'd seen a list of things that they were going to make eligible to be reimbursed, and that was certainly one of them. So I don't think it really, at the end of the day, cost our utility anything, but the county didn't have to pay for it, so they were appreciative that that was done in that manner. So just so you're kind of on the end, is to know what's going on here. That's going, if anybody wants to come up on, on the 11th at 9:45 in the morning at the County Government Center in Geneva, you can be there too. But I just want everybody to know what was going on with that.
And also, as part of that collaboration, the county was also generous enough to allow the toy drive to utilize the space that they were renting from the owners of that building for the last two years for the toy drive. And they've just committed, again, this year, that they'll allow us to use that space for the toy drive. So very generous of both the county and the owners of that building. We're grateful.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have other business from the City Council tonight? Alderman, sir?
Yeah, we had talked about it a couple of weeks ago about gaming again, but I don't know if anything officially was said. So if somebody would join me, I would like to request that we get discussion of video gaming in Batavia on a committee of the whole agenda.
Happy to join.
Okay. Thank you.
You were kind of quiet in your voice. I didn't, you wanted to get the re-update on the gaming ordinance, is that what you said?
Yeah, to have a discussion at the committee of the whole meeting for it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have one, Your Honor.
Alderman Wolf?
As you can see from a nice bright red shirt that I have on, a shirt that Geneva doesn't have, probably worn it for a while, a state championship shirt, one of the two that we have. Just want to reiterate and let everybody know that, again, this is Geneva Week, or for all of us that are from Batavia, it's Beat Geneva Week. This will be the 104th meeting between the two teams. And if you want to check on, is it on the website at the library, George, your history?
It's at bataviahistory.org.
Okay. There's just a phenomenal history of all the games, all the games that were played, not played, and, you know, some of them are very interesting when you go back and look at the runs between the two schools, how many years Batavia went without a win against Geneva, and how many years Geneva went without a win. We're actually riding a really good ride right now. They haven't scored on us in five years. So this will be a very interesting game because they are two completely different teams from the last probably decade. So this should be a really good game Friday night. Anybody that wants to go out there, please get there early because I bet you there's going to be 5,000 people out there. It's going to be packed. I guarantee this will be a great game Friday night.
Did George say that was bataviahistory.org?
Yes, bataviahistory.org. And it is, it is, it's a good read. It's really cool if you like historical facts, that's really good.
Pardon, George?
Yeah, sure, yeah, you can just send it to the, send it to the whole council, and then we can all look at it.
I can send the link if you want.
Okay.
And at seven o'clock on Friday night, out at Bulldog Stadium. Come check out the new lights, the new seats.
As Alderman Wolf has just indicated, he obviously has a more than a passing interest in what's happening out there. And let me just say that as the mayor who wanders around town with some regularity, Alderman Wolf and his partner on broadcasting the games, Mr. Lundberg, the two of them have their own fan club in Batavia. And I mean seriously, they've got, they've got some folks that are ready to call Alderman or school board members when they don't think the game's going to get broadcast. And we went through that last year. But they do a phenomenal job, and everybody over at McDonald's on Saturday morning, you go in there and they say, you know, that Batavia announcing team is like something you'd expect to see on NBC on Sunday afternoon announcing a pro game because those guys got it down to a T, and they give more facts, figures, and, you know, incidental information than the folks on the major TV shows give. So I just want to publicly commend Mr. Wolf and Mr. Lundberg for really putting together a, now a legendary trio or duo there that you're going to, you're going to have a hard time retiring ever because the Batavia fans are going to want you to truly be the voice of the Batavia Bulldogs.
They got a new press box out there for us, so I don't think we're going anywhere soon.
Well, that's good. I'm just saying that you really.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, and your part of it really is quite an interesting spin on the Batavia program.
It's, it's fun. It's a lot of fun. We were thinking about that last week, and I think it's about 300 football games we've done now. So it's getting up there.
And basketball's going to be this year too, right?
Yeah, we will, we will be doing select basketball games. So we'll just, I'll make sure that we announce that, and that that gets out to the public. On the ones we're going to do, it'll be some of the away games and then conference games.
Okay, good. All right, do we have any other business? Okay, just going to the Mayor's Report, and since he's sitting in the audience, I just want to publicly express my, first of all, my thanks to George Sheets for his many years that he's really brought the Batavia Library to a new realm of excellence and sharing and something that I can go around the region and brag about because it really is an extraordinary library. As most of you probably have heard, George has announced that he's leaving next year. Do we know a date next year?
Not specifically, but next summer.
Next summer, he's retiring. And so he's going to be one of those hard acts to follow. And I would, I would assume that maybe when it gets nearer and we know the date, we'll probably want to have you back down here and give you some kind of a proclamation or some type of public expression of thanks on behalf of the community. Because truly, what you've done with that library, and as I've shared with George on a couple of occasions, when I was a small child, my family was good friends with Miriam Johnson, who was for many, many decades, the librarian at the Batavia Library. And so there was a number of occasions when I was at private dinner parties and everything else with Miriam and her husband, and Miriam would get going about how there were so many deficiencies at the old Batavia Library over at the corner of Kitty Corner from where it now is, and the old Newton House, and how she just had this dream that someday there would be a brand-new library program that would really be everything she could dreamed of. Now, unfortunately, she died, I believe, before George got here. But I would just make the statement as one who kind of knew her personally, that were she alive today and could see what George has accomplished there, she would have a smile on her face just from ear to ear because it was everything that she always wanted. And she even once predicted that the day would come when books would start to disappear off the shelves of the library, and the technology world would replace the book in some other form or fashion. And I think we've lived to see that, and George has been the one who's kind of escorted it into town and made it so that even some of us old folks will go in there and buy into it once we understand what button to push and how it works. Because that is probably the wave of the future. But George, again, our thanks for really doing a terrific job. So did you want to say, did you just hang around to just listen to what we're saying? Or did you have something else you wanted to say?
No, I just decided to say that at the end of the meeting.
Okay, well, thank you. All right. Okay. On a, on a more city-related, city-business-related situation, I just want to let the council know that Lauren Newman and I have had several conversations over the last few weeks. And because of the intelligence and information that's been shared with us by our new Police Chief about the vandalism and the issues that have been taking place in downtown Batavia, and we've got several different things going on, that in the coming budget that you're all going to get here pretty quick, Laura has included that Batavia is going to go back in the downtown camera monitoring business. And we're going to propose that we monitor, mount some cameras at strategic locations in downtown Batavia. So if we have somebody coming wanting to come in and spray paint the front of a building or put, you know, some art out there, and we've had that happen unfortunately in a couple of the now historic buildings in downtown Batavia, and it's very troubling to us. And I think, you know, I'm sure that people will ask, well, where are they going to put these cameras? Well, I'll tell you, I think they're probably going to be on East and West Wilson Street and on probably Batavia Avenue from someplace from, say, Houston down to about Main Street. And we're going to try to, those, these will be the kind that you turn them on and they just stay on, and every 24 hours, they, if nothing's happened, they just tape over themselves so that you, you just, but if something happens, the police can go up there right away and, or not, I don't think you even have to go to, I think you can pull it right off the screen of what we got. So we think it's going to be hopefully a deterrent, or at least scare some of these people who get brazen and want to come in and start spray painting and graffitiing and everything else. And we, we've had some graffiti this week that is really almost tragic, in my opinion, for what they did and where they shot it. And so if you go down to River and Wilson, you can see it, it's very evident on the front of one of the buildings. I think it just speaks to the call out there that we really need to have the ability for the Police Department to strengthen the monitor of this whole situation. And we did have cameras for a number of years, and then they kind of got old, and for whatever reasons, we thought we were never going to have any more problems. Well, guess what? We're back with problems. So we're putting it in the budget. If you guys want to take it out, we'll have a fight about it. But I just think that it's something that we need to do in Batavia. So just to put you on notice, give you something to think about, and let the word out that we're going to do it, and we'll kind of go from there. The other thing I just wanted to share, we've got a federal grant that Congresswoman Underwood has submitted to help Batavia buy a building to house our interfaith food pantry and clothes closet, and hopefully the Batavia Access Toy Drive. And we're, was this $3 million? Yeah. She's put it in this federal program, and now she tells us that we have to wait till after November the 8th, which is the election day, and see how, who's in control of Congress, and if the right people are, we shouldn't have any problem getting our money. If the wrong people, not the wrong, but another group is in charge, we may not get the money as easy as we do. I want to just say that we seriously do need this money for this use. This past week, I was involved in another situation, which I'm not going to get in a lot of detail about it, but we had a older Batavia family donate a whole bunch of clothes that was in a house that hadn't been used for a long, long time. And so the Interfaith Food Pantry Executive Director, Alina Mazzaro, went with me up there, and we loaded the car, the van up with all this stuff and brought it back to the food pantry and clothes closet because they're both there together down here on South Shumway Avenue. And by the time we got it all in there, there was so much stuff in there that you kind of probably even walk in that place because there's no storage. And some of the stuff has to be kind of looked at and maybe some thrown away. But this was some pretty good stuff that we were able to bring in. And so now I've been told by some other folks that they'd like to donate piles of nice clothing to go there. And then, of course, the other thing that they do there is they provide food to a lot of different folks. And we've got, it's a steady stream in there. And so it's a good thing. I mean, it's, it's basically supported by the churches in town to some degree, and